Begin, sir.
There you go. Have a good meeting.
Thank you, sir. All right, we are calling for the meeting of the Citrus Zoning Board of Appeals this Thursday, January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, at seven o'clock PM in the Select Board Hearing Room at Town Hall and remote via Zoom. Citrus Zoning Board of Appeals is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner, even when there is disagreement. That is a participation of our community. I want all participants, including marginalized and minority types of communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our community members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. The Citrus Zoning Board of Appeals, as they said, meets both in person and via Zoom. The details of the Zoom call are available online. The meeting is being recorded. It can be reviewed on Citrus Community Television and Facebook Live, and will be available the following day on Comcast China nine. With that, again, I want to reiterate, because we've had some incidents, if you will, in the past, please, with almost respect to the other individuals in the room, to the other individuals outside of the room, to the individuals in the parking lot. Okay? We don't want any untoward statements. With that, we will call the perk application of Matthew Vannedo, four oh five Lovett Avenue, Mahocas, New Jersey, oh seven forty-three, requesting approval of special permit finding in accordance with NGL, Chapter forty-eight, Section six, and Section eight, ten point two of the Citrus zoning bylaws, and/or any other relief that the board may grant to reconstruct the existing relevant additions and raise or reconstruct the proceedings attached to garage performance with setback requirements on a pre-existing non-conforming lot on sixteen Collie Road Avenue. Name and address for the record, please, as soon as your setup.
Thank you. Rick Brady from Brady Consulting, seventy-one Evergreen Street, Kingston.
Good to see you.
Nice to see you as well, along with the architect Sally Weston and the nine year old builder Brian Greenberg. You have some of Sally's nice rendering here as well to share with the board. This is an existing home on a pre-existing non-conforming lot at thirteen thousand two hundred and forty-two square feet, seventy-five feet of frontage, our free zoning district. The existing home, they're going to take down to the foundation, put an addition on the back, porch on the front, small addition on the front here. The existing garage, they would like to remove entirely and slide it back on the lot, create a little more separation between the home and the garage. It will still maintain the same side setback of eight point three feet. There's no decrease in the setback or increase in the non-conformity. The main house itself is located eight point three feet from the front right corner to the side lot line, thirty point one feet to the proposed addition to the front lot line. So we are maintaining dimensional setbacks to the front, inside, and rear lot lines. Separate from the zoning aspects, they are also instructing an in-ground pool in the backyard and installing a stepping system also in the backyard. We're trying to propose for the structure to collect and discharge in the front yard here. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, I had a couple. So the frontage was fifty-two feet approximately, right?
Seventy-five feet, yes.
So the application.
All right.
You're on the right one. Is that right? Nope. Wrong one, sorry.
Oh, yeah, seventy-five feet. And it was, the lot was created in nineteen fifty-nine, so I should.
George was on the wrong.
Good. Everything is different than our, than our application, right?
Okay. Five feet, lot width, front, rear, so side, front, rear, and side setback all one.
Correct.
Okay, quantity is what it is, area is what it is, structure is what it is.
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board on this? Just looking at the plan, the site plan you have up there. Do you have that site yet? Isle of them, so.
Yeah.
So the version you have has everything except for the dry wells or the hydrants. So that was the recent addition. We did not think we needed administrative stormwater review, but the town plan had called otherwise. So we're in the process of figuring that out, what they're planning for.
So again, my question to everyone is always, what's the energy one that's seeking for us?
The one that's before you there tonight, and so, yeah.
So I have one originally dated October twenty, two thousand and twenty-three with provisions on December twelfth.
That's correct.
Oh, you have the well, you have it.
Yeah, I understand the dry wells is a slightly different one, but they don't affect the structures that were here.
No, it's good.
Just want to make sure we're on the same.
And then the plunge, the plunge pool meets setback requirements.
Correct. That's at eight point nine feet outside lot line, or?
So really, you're here because a non-conforming lot.
In frontage.
Well, not, yeah, not a conforming lot, and you're, you're increases per quarter.
Yeah, otherwise we wouldn't be here.
Okay, just so we have clarity on that. You're going from one story to two?
It's an existing case. So one and a half on the existing to two on the proposed.
Oh, let you guys, let's go, let's turn it over to folks here in the room. Questions? Just name and address for the record, please.
Mary Ellen Hughes, twelve Collie Road. I just wanted to check on the seven foot, eight inch addition on the front where the, where it's a non-conforming lot. That structure is going to block our view of the ocean down the street on our first and second floor. So I just wanted to know this, because it's a non-conforming lot.
Yeah, no, right, so our standard, again, is, so, and we have this question by folks all the time, right? Which is, what happens with respect to sidelines, views, veteran? And we have no zoning bylaw that protects those one way or another, or in any situation, right? So that's not sort of a general consideration. If, if people want that, right, they should propose a change to the, to the zoning. So I, again, I encourage people, if that's what they want, they should seek that. So there, there's that. So that, that's sort of the issue, basically, otherwise, you know, there are high requirements, right? Can't exceed your high requirements. This does not exceed as far as most high requirements. Because there would be issue of building, right? The high limits, you should say.
Thirty-five, this is going to.
Any other questions? Anybody on Zoom?
No.
No. Board?
I have nothing to speak.
All right, motion, motion. You got it?
I make a motion of the board applying that such will propose reconstruct the existing law and additions and raising reconstructed with attached garage, normal setback requirements on pre-existing non-conforming lots, existing Collie Rats, if asked, does not create any new non-conformities to the extent that it intensifies any existing non-comformities. Such intensification cannot substantially more than that to its neighbors.
And I would add that we approve the plan by Brady Consulting. The Brady Consulting dated October twenty, two thousand and twenty-three with revised December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three. Second, all in favor? Thank you. Sure. I'm here. We do have, don't charge. That just seems difficult.
It didn't cheat for us.
Yeah.
All right, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, guys. All right, we will call the second application on the docked, uh, happening of the fuel, Kevin Barry, House of Black Patrick Street, Milton, requesting special permit finding in accordance with NGL forty-eight, second six, second eight, and the city zoning bylaws to allow the construction of the second story addition to a non-conforming pre-existing dwelling. Twenty-seven, four, three, Amarok.
I'm Kevin Barry.
Sir, please come on. Yeah, yeah, please. Barry, how are you?
I am.
Sure. Tell us what you're doing.
We, we would like to put a second floor on the house you have down in Amarok.
Yep.
There's a setback on the side and on the back of fine. It's the fronts, it's a little bit tight, but we won't be building that far out. It's going to be just a basic, a box of holes that you've just been welding, actually, by the plans.
Right, so, so you're not changing any of the set, you're basically right on top.
Yes.
Sorry, yes. You're not exchanging these things whatsoever.
None, absolutely.
So we have lots short on frontage, short on area, short on width, R three zoning. You're going from nine hundred square feet to fourteen seventy-six square feet. So basically, you know, twice the size of the house because you put in a second story.
Almost, yeah.
More or less.
Yes.
More or less.
Yep.
Got that, I understand. And the etcetera, etcetera, so I want to hear that.
Sorry, sir. Is she, oh, yes.
Yeah, oh, I know.
Fifteen point, fifteen point one on one side and one point six on the other side.
So that's the warranty line.
And then it looks like front yard setback of three point.
So which one is the third room, Newport? Existing garage. Are you guys changing the existing garage at all?
No.
Okay. That's the deck, to go from dwelling. Reach field. So you're going to, you're going to quick scan us up there?
We're not, we're not changing the bedroom, please, which is the second bedroom on the first floor. We're going to put the stairs in that room, make storage, and maybe a laundry. So we have a laundry in the bathroom right now. So we're not, the second bedroom will actually have stairs and the second floor.
Oh, I see, your slot, you have basically, you'll take that bedroom and make that up or whatever.
Yeah.
So because you're going to stay with it.
And this is, so it'll still stay as a two bedroom.
I mean, that's not our per se, but it goes on after the design. Questions from the board? This one? Okay, from the folks in the room. Anybody online on this application?
No.
Yeah, Bob's here now. All right, Bob, we're looking at twenty-six Newport. For the second floor.
Yep.
No new bedrooms, never changed, and footprint. Anything that we're missing?
Uh, no, I'm pretty familiar with this. It's already getting submitted for a holding warrant, so I've gone over documents. There was a question about, does this trigger that fifty percent, the badge fifty percent?
Right.
Requiring a fee of elevation, and we have a private appraisal, a certified praiser, and we have the contact, there's contact document, and it does not turn into fifty percent.
Okay, and, you know, again, not per se our issue, but we want to approve the final real plan with the elevations, right? So this is a key question. So. So now we want to be able to leave a motion. All right, so on the application of Kathleen Acumen, Kevin Barry, at one sixty-five Patrick Street, Golden Mass, requesting special permit in accordance with NGL, Chapter forty-eight, Section six, Section eight, and the city zoning bylaws, uh, to allow the construction of a second story addition to a non-conforming pre-existing dwelling on a non-conforming lot at twenty-sixty Fourth Street, Amarok, Nass. I moved, we moved it, we find, moved with the board to approve such construction pursuant to the plan by P U G B and hearing, March of the Mass, dated four eight, two thousand and twenty-three. Right? It's, it's over there. Four eight, two thousand and twenty-three, and that the board find that said, said addition produces no new non-conformities and to the extent that it has surprised any existing non-conforming specifications, not to attempt to mark them here. Set, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. General set?
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a very easy.
Thanks.
Thanks for making, thank you for this. All right. I'll do, I'll do this one. No, no. Yeah, this one's. All right, and we will call our final application of the evening, continuing from November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, of Stephen, of J. Stephen Bjorkland, eight sixty-one Main Street, Norwell, requesting special permit finding in accordance with NGL forty-eight, Section six, and Section eight, and the city zoning bylaws, and/or any other relief that the board has appealed back to allow the construction of a single-family home located one forty-one Turner Road, Citrus Pass. Name and address for the record.
My name is Steve Bjorkland, eight sixty-one Main Street, Norwell.
Thank you, Bjorkland, nice to see you. Why don't you run us to? Both. Okay.
Just for the record, I think I'm the elephant in the room here. This is the second application convention you've had in regards to the waiver of I'm trying to construct by either special permit or finding, which is clear in the zoning bylaw. And my proposal is to reconstruct the house that was actually taken down in nineteen eighty. It seems like an awful long time ago, but if I went through this, what I'd like to do is go through the bylaw first, kind of the history of the bylaw, because I did watch the December meeting that you guys had with Mr. DeLisi that went on for about an hour and a half while I'm trying to figure out how this bylaw is going to be interpreted. So, believe it or not, I watched that meeting about five times, finished at about six o'clock tonight, again, just to make sure that I had everything straight and square, because once you make the decision, it's going to end up holding for the entire future until something else changes. So I'm hoping that I've guided you guys along as to what I think really, obviously, should happen with that bylaw. So I'm glad Bob made it tonight, because I didn't know he was going to be here. I didn't know he was going to be here, so it's, I'm glad he's here. So the planning board had a public hearing, February tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, where Bob proposed this bylaw. Okay, and I'll go through as quickly as I possibly can. If somebody gets stuck on something, let me know, I'll slow down a little bit. But Bob presented at that meeting, and he said that it's not a widespread problem. This is the people requesting the waiver, it's not a widespread problem. That he did cover the properties that do not exist now can come forward and request the waiver. I think in your December meeting, you basically hashed that around for the Central F project and came to the same conclusion that you have the ability to waive that timeframe. Bob stated that strict application of the bylaw is a taking without compensation and was reviewed with town council, who was in the room at that public hearing. He said that the intent is not to shut the door on any property. He said, it's not as though the language precludes one forty-one Turner Road. It just makes the zoning board of appeals the gatekeeper of the bylaw. And an hour and twenty minutes into the meeting, Bob said, there's case law that says you basically can't do that, can't bypass into regulation, can't take a valuable piece of property from me and decrease substantially the value of it. So that's basically what I'm taking from the planning board meeting. Bob might comment, but again, I have to, have to watch it five times, I think I have those quotes correct. I'll go to the December twenty-first hearing, which was a tough one for you guys. That's the one you probably have to sleep in anyways, because it's been a long time. And this was, this actually was a central street rebuild, but it was mainly discussion on, again, how the by, the new bylaw is going to end up being interpreted and whether that qualified or didn't qualify to be for that waiver. George asked why the delay for filing, although you want to know why they went beyond the four-year timeframe. Hour and thirteen minutes in, Bob Vogel talked about a pile of rocks from two hundred years ago coming in and asking for a permit, okay? I can clarify that right now. The bylaw says that it had to exist at the adoption of the bylaw. That was the spring of nineteen thirty-six. I will give you some, some paperwork that I have from the town clerk, which verifies that. It's true and tested copy of the first bylaw the town constituent had. So if somebody had a building that was built two hundred years ago that was still there at the adoption of the bylaw in nineteen thirty-six, in my opinion, they would qualify to be able to come in and request a waiver. If it was not there in nineteen thirty-five, it can't come in and ask. So there are no byproducts.
That's very clear, it's going to ask you how far back.
Yep, nineteen thirty-six, it's not what I think. It's the bylaw says at the adoption of the bylaw. In my opinion, the Citrus zoning bylaw was adopted in nineteen thirty-six and was verified by town, by the town clerk, okay? And it says that it had to exist in whole or in substantial part at the adoption of the bylaw. Hour and twenty minutes in, Chris talked about whether it was an amendment or an adoption. And clearly, it's an amendment of the bylaw. I have the vote from town meeting that it was an amendment, it was moved as an amendment. In the September hearing, Bob indicated that it was amended, the bylaw was amended in two thousand and twenty-two. I think it's pretty clear, I hope the board understands, it was an amendment to the bylaw. There's nothing that says anything different than that in the official record. Regardless of what the bylaw itself says, it's moved as an amendment. So hopefully, there's not many more questions about that, but I'll respond if there's questions in the future about that. At hour twenty-eight minutes in, George said, we have some ability to waive the timeframe. So again, this is a property that is, was not in existence on April eleventh of two thousand and twenty-two, but you think you came to the conclusion that you, you have the ability to grant the waiver in certain circumstances, right? An hour and thirty-three minutes in, George says, yes, we can grant a permit or an extension. It's really the extension is the, is the issue. Hour thirty-four, George said, if the fire happened four or five years ago, then maybe you could do that and allow that Central F, but there was questions as to how far back this thing could reach, okay? And Bob can correct me if I'm wrong, there's probably five or six properties in town that may make benefit of this particular provision in the bylaw, in, in the new amendment. And I, and I think Jeff was, was getting drilled pretty good on, on this timeframe issue, okay? I think Bob will agree that he would like to see a property that's located on Surfside Road be able to come in and rebuild, which you'll have to grant the waiver for, and that's part of the intent of why he passed this bylaws, to get rid of some of these structures and have people be able to rebuild. That property hasn't been used for twenty-five years. So I think the intent was not to say it's three or four or five years or six years, but there was discussion both from Chris and from George on, what's that timeframe? We don't think we can go back ten years, okay? That seemed like it was a difficult stretch. Hour and thirty-seven, George says, I need a compelling reason to grant the waiver. Why is it different from other properties? And that's okay, we'll do that. And it's okay if it happened before two thousand and twenty-two. So that's key in, in mind, it's key also in the one that's in Amarok. Chris was talking about the extension and extenuating circumstances that took more than four years. I get that, that's the whole purpose of the grant of the extension. It's because a property has been unused and or abandoned for more than four years. Otherwise, you wouldn't request the extension. So obviously, you guys can grant the extension, that's why it was put in there. George, you made a comment towards the end at hour forty-three, you said, you don't want this to be in perpetuity. That gets back to the, two hundred years ago, somebody can't come in, the Indians are all gone from town, and it really boils down to nineteen thirty-six, in my opinion, at the adoption of bylaw. I think that somebody commented, I think it was Bob, actually commented that the property on Central F fits the intent of the bylaw, which is to allow somebody to be able to rebuild, but you still have to make that finding as to why, why it took them more than the four years. I think that's, that's great. And towards the end of it, Chris had brought up, again, eight years might be too long. And if that's what the board believes, then that's what the board should stick with. Just for the record, I'll move on to the hearing in September twenty-first of two thousand and twenty-three. Now, this hearing lasted about six minutes and twenty-five seconds, I believe. I watched it more than five times. This is thirty-eight Holly Road, which is the first application that came in for the waiver of the timeframe, okay? Starts at a minute and fifty seconds into the hearing. The applicant came in and indicated that they had a fire fifteen or twenty years ago, okay? Which means the property was not used for fifteen or twenty years, it's actually seventeen years. The fire was in two thousand and six, water was shut off, the house was destroyed, uninhabitable, and not used. It wasn't abandoned, just wasn't used, and that's a key item as well, because the bylaw does cover or not used. Three minutes into it, Bob said that they amended the bylaw in two thousand and twenty-two at town meeting, again, that's to show it is an amendment, it's not an adoption, okay? And they stated that previously, that they, there was no, you're forbidden from any activity on the properties in this situation before two thousand and twenty-two, for that amendment. And the board, okay, actually, George had asked the board, are there any questions from the board in regards to that particular bylaw? The response on the record was, I'm good, okay? So not a single question was asked. Nobody said, it's been seventeen years, how come you didn't come in within the seventeen-year timeframe? Okay, so I would be curious, find out from the board, what criteria do you use to grant that permit in waiving the provision from four years to seventeen years? Because there's nothing in the record as to why you did it. I know why you did it, but I'm not sure if the board understands why they did it. Again, I'm going to go back to Bob's indication was, they were forbidden from doing anything until the two thousand and twenty-two modification or the amendment. He's right, he's absolutely right. Nobody before that had a right to come in and ask for a time waiver, whether it was by special permit or by variance, you didn't have the ability in the town constituent to do that, okay? I'm not saying it wasn't done, because I'm going to hand you fluid decisions that go from nineteen seventy all the way up to present day, where the board did grant waivers to the timeframe. And they only granted timeframe, the, the waiver of the timeframe in the section that talked about reconstructing these buildings that were damaged or destroyed. They don't talk about eight, ten, which talks about the non-use of the properties, up until the decision for one forty-one Turner Road, when there were different zoning board of appeals members that voted these first ones in with all the extensions from the storm of seventy-eight, okay? So basically, that's the, kind of the history of the bylaw itself, okay? I'm glad that the bylaw has been changed, obviously. I'm glad that the bylaw has been changed, obviously, to allow somebody to come forward that couldn't come forward before 2022. And I will tell you that the people on Holly Road, if they came in, you would have had to deny them. So regardless if they came in in three years, four years, whatever it was, if it was past the timeframe, you had to deny them. I don't know why they waited the four year timeframe. But in my opinion, it doesn't matter if it's four years or if it's 25 years, like the one on Surfside Road. The objective is to clean up the town, get rid of those properties and allow people economic use of the properties. If you read the bylaw itself and Bob's intent on the bylaw stated that it was to get rid of blithe in town. Very clear about that. This was to get rid of these dilapidated structures. And I would ask Bob that if that's truly the reason why this bylaw was written, if that was the true intent of the bylaw, then why doesn't the bylaw say this is to get rid of blithe? And if you don't do anything in four years, we will go forward, condemn the structures and have them removed. That will get rid of the blithe in town. There's nothing in this bylaw that requires anybody to take down any house that's dilapidated in town. What this bylaw does is it will encourage them to remove the structure and make economic use and not lose the value of your property when you take it down. But they don't have to take it down. So I would say that the true intent of the bylaw is to not take away the economic value of the property like Bob has stated. He said, you don't want to get into these takings without compensation and all that. So that being said, again, it's a 1936 bylaw. I think you heard in the December meeting that our first provision for reconstruction was a two year timeframe. And that's not necessarily true. In 1936, there was a provision that allowed one year. That was there until 1977. In 1976, they adopted the zoning act, the state adopted the zoning act. And in 77, the town modified their bylaw by amendment to include all the provisions that came in with the zoning act itself. One of those provisions was a two year timeframe. You couldn't have a bylaw that required somebody to put it up in less than two years. And that's what the town did. Town adopted that, amended their bylaw to include all of that. I think that was Article 37 in 1977. And since 77, the next change that we had was 1993. And we've heard a lot of talk, I know Chris, you keyed in on this, that this really had to do with whether it was a divorce or whether it was a probate issue or any litigation, anything like that, that pushed you past that two year timeframe when it was changed from two years to four years. And I can tell you, that's not the case. What I can tell you is in 1993, Steve Bjorken proposed a bylaw. Okay, at town meeting. And that bylaw was to do away with the time limit to reconstruct single family dwellings. That was denied at town meeting. Back then, some of the people that were involved in town were trying to prevent a particular property from being built. And what happened was after the storm of 91, people had until 93 to rebuild. I went up and did the research and found 60 houses that were not finished by the second year anniversary. That's why I proposed the bylaw. The town went and had an individual come back with another citizen's petition, which was, I think, Article 15 in 1933, which moved it from two years to four years. What that did is that allowed everybody from the storm of 91 to vote to save themselves. And it left out 141 Turner Road. That was the intent behind that. They could find height if they want. That was the intent behind it. And it was successful. It was a great town meeting. A woman got up and quieted the microphone. It was awesome. It changed everybody that was going to vote the timeframe away. Changed them to say, yeah, as long as you give us the four years, we don't care about doing away with the timeframe altogether. Puts us in the spot where we are now. Some of those people that probably voted, didn't make it. So now we're going to go back and change the bylaw yet again to allow those people to come back in and request that permit. And again, our bylaw right now with the change says that any lawful structure or use of land or structure existing in whole or substantial part as of the effective date of this bylaw or any amendment there too, subject to limitations that match general law. Section 6 as amended or any obstruction under building from may be continued unless or until abandoned for a period of four years or more, except the time limit may be waived by the zoning board of appeals by means of a special permit and or finding. And that's key because it wouldn't say finding if it didn't mean you could also do it with a finding. My opinion, what that means is if somebody is proposing a larger structure, then they're going to end up, it's bigger than 20% of an increase, it's going to need to have a special permit. But if it's not going to be larger than 20% increase, a building inspector can be directed by the zoning board with a simple finding that the proposed structure is not substantially more detrimental and does not create any new non-performing notes. My application fits into that. But because the timeframe waiver, if you look at my application, that's actually what I asked for because I don't believe that I actually need the special permit because my property is at 19.7% of an increase and it meets all the setbacks. It meets all the height requirements. It was approved twice by conservation in the past, so I'm not worried about that. It's got a sewer tie in. It's got a water tie in. There's a gas tie in there. It has all of those things. They've all been there. It will pay for by the individual. Hopefully that covers what the zoning bylaw says now. I do know that you've got language in there that talks about April 12th, 2022. I understand that that's in there. And that may be what takes out the ability for Bob to actually grant the permit without the zoning board of appeals granting that finding first. So that's why I'm here for that finding. And again, it was Article 19, zoning bylaw amendment. I moved that the town amended the zoning bylaw, section 800, non-performing structures as printed. Article 19, moved and voted in the embassy at town meeting. My particular piece of property, 141 Turner Road. This is really, in my opinion, what it's all about. I think you guys probably know that as well. Some of you, if you've been around for a little while, probably know. Ed Locke inherited the property from his mother, I believe. And they were there for many, many years. And in the storm of 78, his house was actually knocked off the pilings, which were probably about a foot high off the ground. And it was a small cottage and it moved towards the street. When it moved towards the street, it was there until 1980. And in 1980, there was letters from the building inspector that went back and forth with Mr. Locke. And I'll go to the minutes of the meeting here if I can, when Mr. Locke came in in 1986 to rebuild. So he took the structure down in 1980. It came back in 1986 to rebuild. In the minutes, it basically said that because of the damage, they were financially unable to rebuild on the foundation and fix it. It said, Mr. Stone, who was the building commissioner at the time, in a letter states that he intends to start court action on March 7th of 1980 under Mass General Laws, uh, Mass Building Code, excuse me, 123 Unsafe Structures. Violation of this law will mean a thousand dollar fine. Mr. Locke contacted Mr. Stone, did appear and hang him in court. So he took him to court. Mr. Locke agreed to have the building removed, which he did. It was Mr. Locke's intention, if he was financially able, to have the building rebuilt. Mr. Locke has always paid the taxes on the property and he was always under the impression that he could rebuild. Strange thing that happened here was when they finally settled this in court, they were past the two year timeframe. Because the damage was in 78. So the agreement with the building inspector and the town was that he would be able to go back and rebuild. So he removed the structure and he spent about $5,000, which is what he got from the federal government for insurance money. And he used the $5,000 to actually get rid of the structure, clean the site up so that the neighbors would not have to look at blithe, which is basically the same thing that happened down at Central Ave in Hamra. So these are the two properties that actually did the right thing, cleaned them up so that the neighbors wouldn't have to look at the blithe. Both of those properties are in front of you presently.
May I ask you an actual question?
Sure.
When did Mr. Locke voluntarily, voluntarily, or did he tear down the original home?
1980.
And when did he tear it down?
1980. Yes, there was an agreement.
No, I understand. I'm just trying to get the timing, right? Because there's some dates.
Yep. So it was within six years of structure not being, when they actually came in to request to rebuild it.
Yeah.
And that was with, again, with an agreement that if he takes it down, he can come back and rebuild. He was unaware of the two year timeframe to rebuild. Again, they were already past the two year timeframe to rebuild. Then he made the agreement with the town that he would take it down, clean it up and he could come back and put it up. So they did come in in 1986. They were denied the right to put the property back up again. There are, there are people that will be in here and I'm going to just go to the minutes of that original meeting if I can for a second.
Did you say the original meeting was the 86 meeting?
86 meeting, yes. That was the first time he was in front of the zoning board of appeals for the right to reconstruct the property. It was 1986. And obviously at that meeting, there were neighbors there because the property hadn't been rebuilt within the two year timeframe. Some of the neighbors are here. I have no animosity with the neighbors. I chat with them when I can. Gentleman directly across the street who is under room here, basically put in the minutes here. My parents' house is directly across the street. 90% of the value of their house is due to the view. They will suffer more of a hardship than Mr. Locke because they'll lose their view and devalue the property. That's not the case.
Right. You've heard my opinion on that.
Yes. And I think that's probably why, if there are more neighbors that are here, everybody's concerned with the view. If I lived across the street, I'd be concerned with the view. I understand the regulations and I know that there's nothing that this board can do about the view. I don't think there's any other thing other than that. So I think Mr. Locke would lose more value if he can't put his house back than somebody who lives across the street that can't see the water. I come along and I buy the property. Everybody wonders, why would I buy an unbuildable property?
What decade? It's in here, but what was that? You bought it in 90, right?
92, I believe.
You bought it in 90?
Never, 91.
91? Sorry. I don't have the right phone. And I bought 100 properties, so I don't.
I understand.
Okay, so I come along and everybody wonders why I would buy an unbuildable property. There was a gentleman by the name of Peter Harrington. I don't know if any of you have ever heard that name before. Peter Harrington wrote the zoning act. He was hired by Barbara Gray, wrote the zoning act. I actually hired him to sit down and talk to me. He came to the town situated and represented me at the hearing when I came in, I believe, the first time. And he indicated to me that the intent of 48 section 6, his intent, he was the author of 48 section 6, was never written to take away somebody's right to put their own house back again, a single family dwelling. The mixups come between, you have a bowling alley in a residential area. If you close it and you're not there for two years, sure, you shouldn't have a bowling alley. But it doesn't take away all use of the property. You'd have to turn it into a single family home because that's what zoned in the area. It's a single family home. That was his intent when he wrote it. I brought him into the zoning board of appeals. It was a really, really bad meeting and I don't think any of you knew Wally Arcand. Bob, Mike and all Wally Arcand? Okay, well, he was a, he was a pretty good friend of mine, but he was a, the zoning board chair that ran with an iron fist. And he looked at Mr. Harrington and he said, I don't care what your intent was. That's not the way I read it. And I sat at the back of the room and I just shook my head because it was a horrible presentation that he did for me. After that meeting, Mr. Arcand said, you should have done the hearing yourself. He said, that guy was, was really bad. So I lost a lot of money with that. But I was actually denied because of the two year timeframe. And the two year timeframe was on non-use. So this was, it was really section 810, non-use. As I go through the, the history of the decisions that were granted or not granted in the town situated, through those timeframes. And I'm going to do this as quick as I can.
Please, because just to be clear, so people understand, none of those decisions are binding on this board. They're not precedentiary. They're not binding for, so you can go through them.
No, they're.
And you know, I understand you're trying to persuade us and that's fine. So please, I want you to do it, but please quickly.
And I'm not trying to prove that there's any precedent. What I'm trying to show, what I'm trying to show is that there's consistency.
I understand.
Okay, consistency. That's the key. So 23 Rebecca Road, which would have been able to come in under this bylaw. Again, that's actually been sold to the next door neighbor. The next door neighbor picked their house up. This board, zoning board appeals gave them a permit to lift it up and combine the two properties together. And that was in 2011, so I believe it was before all of these present people were on the board. Okay. And this is about the same timeframe of one round. A house destroyed by fire in 1975 was 79 Turner Road. Because of personal problems, they couldn't rebuild it. The board voted unanimously to grant the requested change. That was a variance from a timeframe. And I think we have a real estate attorney on the board now, probably understands you can't get a variance from a timeframe. It has to do with the soil shape or pottery. But yet they granted a variance for a timeframe. We have another house that was destroyed, 1976, 8 Foam Road. Home was destroyed by fire in the 1950s. And they came in in 1976 and they granted a special permit for that one to go back up again. 26 years after the fire. Mr. Armado, who owned property on Beaver Dam Road. It blew up in a gas explosion. I believe it was 24 years after the gas explosion that was actually allowed to be reconstructed again. And I think that the zoning decision actually says, while this board and the applicant agree that the board in 1992 exceeded its authority by informing Mr. Armado that he didn't need to review his special permit, the history of the property is relevant to the board's decision. So they already admitted that he went way beyond the timeframe by decades. But the board granted him the permit to put the house back up again. As long as the reconstruction was done within two years of raising the dwelling. That one was.
There was a dwelling that was still existing.
There was a chimney there, actually. Yeah, there was a chimney that was there. It was a pretty good guest room. And that special permit actually had conditions on it as for the size of the building, which I won't get into. 95 Old Open Bucket Road. This one had a house that was destroyed in a fire and it was destroyed like in 1960 something. And they came back in and they said that they did not do it within the timeframe. But what they did is they granted them a variance from the square footage of the dwelling, the square footage of the lot, which again, it's a rectangular shaped lot. It's nothing unique about the lot. It's just too small to build on. But they granted the various unanimously on that one. Good, 1988, we'll get into a little bit more. 47 Ocean Drive. This gets into, again, a little bit more of the bylaw as well. It was unused as of 1988. There was a letter that went in that talked about this house being open to the weather, accessible to vandals. The kids were breaking in. And town council wrote a letter about how you get rid of blithe. It was pulp, minimum page. And they indicated to the building inspector, the entire process to have a structure removed if the purpose is to get rid of blithe. So 1988 forward, they knew the answer. The answer was you go through that process and you condemn the property. That came into the zoning board of appeals. And. September fifteenth, two thousand and eleven, so from nineteen eighty-eight to two thousand and eleven. Okay, in two thousand and eleven, they got a permit to take the property down that hadn't been used for that long, and put it back up again. That was zoning board of appeals. Nineteen eighty. House burned down at twenty-seven Jericho Road, they did nothing for six years, they came back after six years, went in, got a special permit. That was a special permit, not a variance, to move a structure back on there, and the board voted to grant that. Six years, they did nothing. So these timeframes are all within the same timeframe that Mr. Locke came in, and for some reason, he was denied. While around the corner, they were granting permits for people during the same timeframe, with the same, without an agreement to rebuild, they just didn't come in for six years. He actually had an agreement, or believed that he had an agreement, which is why he took his house down, so that makes one forty-one Turner Road definitely unique from all these other decisions that came out. And I'm not gonna go through all these, there's probably about another twenty of them in here, all of these were in regards to, uh, the storm of seventy-eight. And there were a lot of people that came in after that, received variance after variance after variance to extend the timeframe. Again, no power to grant a variance from a timeframe, but that's what they did back then, that's how they interpreted, the board at the time interpreted their ability to grant permits. Strange thing about all of these is, they only received the right to rebuild the structure. None of these ever asked for non-use. They never talked about non-use back then, they said, if we give you the right to put the structure up, obviously you must be able to use it. So none of these have any approval to reuse the structure after the two-year timeframe of non-use. That didn't come in, in a decision until Ed Locke in nineteen eighty-six. They decided that non-use was the issue there. Um, there's. Two other decisions that were in here, one of them was one sixty-seven Jericho Road, I don't know if anybody is familiar with that or not. One sixty-seven Jericho Road came into the zoning board of appeals in nineteen eighty-eight. Prior to that, the house was destroyed in nineteen seventy, what was it, storm seventy-eight, the storm of seventy-eight. I owned the property next door to this for a number of years, uh, it was the apartment building down on, uh, Jericho Road. This was a little build, little place that was next to it, had a tree growing up in the middle of it. So they went to the zoning board of appeals, and zoning board of appeals ultimately denied the petitioner's request for a special permit for reconstructing dwelling down there. That decision was actually signed by Jim Davies, Ed McWafflin, Wally Arcand, good friend Wally. Uh. A number of years after that, gentleman by the name of Ed McWafflin bought the property. It was interesting, um, bought it in a trust, and paid reasonably short money for it. And there was no further action in front of the zoning board of appeals from nineteen eighty-eight until two thousand and five. And two thousand and five, excuse me, two thousand and five, it wasn't in front of the zoning board, it was issued a building permit to reconstruct the dwelling. I don't know how, but it got issued a permit to reconstruct the dwelling. There was a foundation there at one point in time, it sat there for a number of years, and there was also a number of years where there was nothing on the site, except the folks sat there. They did come back with the zoning board of appeals, though. They came back to the zoning board of appeals in two thousand and twelve to increase the size of the structure. Okay? Structure was a foundation that sat there for years and years. That's when they came back in. It was. Twenty-six years after the original damage, I think, damage or destruction, whatever you wanna call it, I think there was a twenty-six-year timeframe in there. The clear history is that they've been granting waivers since zoning's been here. There are very, very few denials for people to be able to not rebuild their properties. The ones that I've found, and I've been researching this for thirty-two years, and I have found pretty much every non-conforming property that would have potentially the ability to come in and request this waiver from you guys. And I can tell you, it's not a pile of rocks in the West End from two hundred years ago. You have property in the corner of Sixth Avenue and Oceanside Drive, where there's still a foundation there, but they were denied the right to rebuild because the next-door neighbor bought the property. In my opinion, it's not a vacant lot, it has a foundation on it, it's not a substantial structure, which the new bylaw, the waiver, you have to have a substantial structure. But, uh, but they shouldn't have merged it, they merged that one with the one next door, okay? And that merger is only for vacant lots, I know the attorneys are gonna know that, uh, both of those, one had a house, the other one had the foundation on it, so. It, it shouldn't have been merged, but they voluntarily merged it, and they do not have the ability now to come in, because they bought it and created a beautiful yard area, so they're not gonna end up coming in and asking. If they did, this board certainly could say, you have abandoned that use, not necessarily not used it, you have abandoned the use by connecting it together, just like Jericho Road. There's two properties that I know of, again, mine that I'm in for tonight, and the one in Humrock, where, again, my belief is that people did the right thing, they cleaned up the mess, now they'd like to be able to rebuild. You've said you have the power to be able to do that, that one, they waited longer, they actually didn't come in within six years, they came in, I believe, ten years later, I think you had mentioned that. My property, they came in pretty quickly, after, six years is pretty quick, this board's already granted relief for people who have been seventeen years out. I would hope that you would look forward to granting the relief on Central Ave, as well as granting it to this property, if the board chooses to do that. Uh, there's another property which gets into the non-use, this is the last, uh, additional property I would talk about. It's, uh, one sixty Chief Justice Pushing Highway, and it was a property that burned in a fire, uh, in two thousand and eleven, on February seventeenth. And that property, uh, they did not file for their permits by the third anniversary, but they were granted the right to extend their permits that they had. Uh, until two thousand, I think eighteen was the first time they pulled an actual building permit to fix the roof on the structure. And the bylaw clearly says you have to have filed for your forty-eight section six finding by the third anniversary. Um, and I got one more thing I want to try to read in here, hand. Okay, and this. This I'd like to read in. Uh, comments on the general application of section eight thirty. Okay? A, this bylaw was adopted to encourage the prompt repair of damaged structures, thereby avoiding abandoned derelict buildings that would be of blith on the neighborhood. However, in many instances, the unintended consequence is exactly the opposite, leaving buildings empty and unusable with no route to rehabilitation. This is a dangerous, unhealthy, and eminently undesirable situation. I could point to properties in this situation all over town, examples can be found on Glades Road, Surfside Road, Holly Road, Pleasant Street, Noel Ave, Marshall Ave, and Vinyl Road, and I have no doubt there's many others. The strictest interpretation of the bylaw banning the repair or reconstruction of damaged structures after a certain time period has lapsed, renders the subject property essentially worthless. Or at least, it decreases the value substantially, since the only thing that can be done is to take the structure down, and that leaves the lot by definition unbuildable. The only potential value remaining is that the lot could be joined to an adjacent parcel, increasing that parcel's value. In my opinion, this constitutes an uncompensated taking, and as such, I believe it would withstand a court challenge. Since the bylaw applies solely to pre-existing non-conforming properties, it is discriminatory in nature. If a property meets the zoning bylaws in place at the time of its initial development, it should not be penalized for not adhering to regulations promulgated at a later date. In the case of repairing or rebuilding after damage, there should be absolutely no difference in the rights and remedies attached to a presently conforming property versus a formerly non-conforming property subsequently rendered non-conforming by a bylaw change. Okay? And that's gonna sound pretty familiar, I think. Uh. The author of that was Mr. Bob Bow. And I applaud Bob, he's a hundred percent right, and that shows that the intent is to allow these people to be able to rebuild the properties and not take away their rights. And I truly believe that that was his intent in the bylaw. And the only properties you're gonna find coming in that were vacant is Humrock and this one. The other ones have a couple foundations on them, they're probably gonna come in and make that argument, but, you know, there may have been years and years that they didn't come in and do anything. That's not the case on one forty-one Turner Road. So if you wanna single this one out, it was an agreement with the town, came in within a six-year timeframe, you've approved one longer than that, I'd love to see you be consistent with that. And please grant the approval for one forty-one Turner Road to go back. Thank you.
Good. Um, on that, I think, Bob? Hey, your name, I don't care, your name has been taken in vain.
I wouldn't say.
So, uh, but, uh, I, I wanna give you the opportunity to comment. Um, then, um, here, obviously, community commentary, um, and the folks on, online. Um, if you wanna comment. Right, go ahead.
Uh, sure. I'd like to start by commending the, on the depth and, uh, breadth of his research and, uh, presentation he made tonight. Uh, although I, I would have expected nothing less.
Absolutely.
Uh. The quote that you just heard was indeed mine, I knew it sounded familiar when you. Uh, I'm wondering what it was. I think it was previous to the adoption or the proposal in the town meeting adopt present bylaw.
Two thousand and eighteen.
Exactly. Uh, so that, uh, I would sub, submit that it's possible to take advice from other parties to reconsider, uh, aspects of your, of your thinking and to come to. A consensual agreement, uh, that isn't strictly your own, that a particular wording would be more acceptable, for instance, to the planning board. Uh, which has to approve all amendments that go before down meeting, uh, than some other type of language. Uh, a couple of the points, I mean, Steve's made a lot of sort of specific points during the presentation. Uh, I'd like to comment on a few of them maybe got in order, I think one very important one. And I'm not an attorney, nor is Steve, he's probably spent more time with attorneys than I have. Um. The claim is that the bylaw that was first dotted in nineteen thirty-five, if you say it, thirty-six. Is the governing statute of the governing language for cases that one's considering. Uh, I would strongly disagree with that. And don't know that there's case law, or that there isn't case law, but it seems. Just completely obvious to me, beyond obvious, that the language that exists. In black and white print before you, in the zoning bylaw book that I'm looking at, is the language that is to be enforced. Uh, at any given time when a case comes forward, meeting today. Um. An amendment to that language would then take the place of what's here now. And if a case came forward under that amended language, that's the language that would be applied. Previous to this, before this amendment, there was different language, and that was the language that was applied to cases that came during the time period, that language existed.
And I would also note, in light of that, the language of eight ten point one says, um, and define modifications to structures in uses of land or structures lawfully existing as of the effective date of this bylaw, comma, April eleventh, twenty twenty-two. So, the eight ten point one, right, believes that the effective date of this bylaw is that date.
Thank you, that's exactly what was intended, I'll tell you that when I.
That's, that, I'm just reading what it says.
Right, right. Uh, a couple of other points, um, samples that you've just heard. And again, I, I don't wanna characterize this and, and make it any more kind of difficult for the board to consider than it already is. But those examples were presented to, seem to me, impugning the judgment and disagree with the judgment of previous boards. Uh, in very many cases, and yet. It seems to me that this board's being asked by Mr. Jordan to make the same or similar type of decision tonight. Uh, after. You know, after the decisions that were cited, uh, were cited disparaging. Um. I know that, and I agree, that, you know, the principle of passing a law which decreases the value of the property substantially is a slippery slope. Um. But if somebody's paying taxes on a property, and, um, there's, there's really no good way to proceed to demolition of properties, like for instance, eighty-one Surfside Road. If the taxes are being paid, there is a process doing that, you appoint a board of the, of the commissioner, I believe it's the fire chief, and. Uh, an unaffiliated contractor, you know, germining this structure is unsafe, hazardous, forever. And you go to court, you get a court order, you won't, you can pay the debt. The town has to pay for it, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars, whatever it takes. It just, for a lot, for all those reasons, and some others, just very, very seldom, it's never happened, I've been here ten years and never seen it. I'm not sure Neil Donovan has been here four or five, has ever seen it. Um. Turner Road property, am I wrong, Steve, what did you pay for that when you bought it?
What's that?
What did you pay for the Turner Road property when you bought it?
Oh, I'm not sure, is that relevant?
Uh, well, you asked, you, you made a point that. You know, by passing a bylaw, you can substantially increase the value of the property.
Oh, so it's a thousand, it's a thousand dollars. So, if my father gave me the property for nothing, and you, does, and I'd ask, do you know what my relationship was with Mr. Locke?
No.
Okay, all right. So, and again, when I did go to court on this, every time the town brings up, like, the fact is a thousand dollars that I paid, and the judge's decision comes back and says, that's totally irrelevant, why do you keep bringing it up? So, and it is irrelevant, I can give somebody a property worth a million dollars, it doesn't make it worth a dollar, so I give it to them for a dollar. Value of the property, not what I paid.
There's value waste on the property, that is not perfect.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, I, yeah, I.
Well, we hear your side, you said a lot, oh, absolutely, we're sorry, we're dealing with.
But, but again, just for the, for the record, this is something that's brought up every time I come in with this property. And I don't know whether it's jealousy on somebody's part because I put good deals together, and all of a sudden I shouldn't be able to build, but I had properties given to me. Bob, I got a building permit at one fifty-four, um, Tilden Road, and I got the property for nothing, does that mean it's worth nothing? Well, they just valued it at three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, so it's totally irrelevant what I paid for it. I can tell you the properties on either side are worth four hundred and ninety-three thousand apiece.
While we gave you plenty of damage, a lot of that's.
Let's, uh, we do it again, we want, we wanna give everybody a fair amount, and we also don't want to care if you're dead, because we're not gonna hear.
So the only other thing I would say is that the intent of the bylaw was to deal with buildings like eighty-one Surfside Road, like thirty-four Holly, or whatever the name of Holly was, that exist, not buildings that don't exist. Um, the idea was to remove blighted properties that are fire hazards, that are, uh, a danger to the community, that. That decrease property values because of their unsightliness, that sort of thing. Uh, and, you know, I hope that continues, and I think it will, uh, to improve the community and residences near these properties. This particular property does not fall into that category.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Um. And we'll, we'll let the board, in a second, I wanna get everybody in the community, well, I wanna give people that wanna speak on this in the community some. in the community some time, please be as brief as you can be. If you want to speak on this, because, again, we don't want to be going too far. Anybody in the room first? Name, name an address for the record, please, please stand up, speak to your.
I'm Ted McCafferty, Evan McCafferty, one thirty Turner Road. I've been being Stephen Manatters for a long time, since nineteen ninety-one or ninety-two. I just wanted to, I think, back in November, I had submitted, my attorney submitted a brief to the board. Just making sure that we got this brief and it was dealt directly.
Brief? It's Steve now, right? From, sorry. I'm sorry, we characterized it as brief, we were like, well, that's.
The letter, on his letter, right, on, on Walker, yeah, we have that.
And just in opposition to what I thought was the original intent here with the new, the new laws in effect, whatever it is, the fact that it specifically referenced structures that were built on about April eleventh, twenty twenty-two, they haven't existed, right? I don't want to waste everyone else's time. But also, I just want you to bring your attention to the last two pages of that. We pretty much quote Mr. Borclin in some of those previous meetings when they were discussing the intent of that law. He actually brought it up as to whether or not it would apply to his property, et cetera. And they pretty much told him it did not, and that came up, you know, two meetings prior. So it's not like he wasn't aware that this didn't exist prior to today. And I want to go back to all this other stuff. We've been here, this land court decision, everything that Mr. Borclin raised today has been litigated even here or someplace else over and over again. And I'll leave it at that, but we have, yes, but yes, so we do have that, we have.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else in the room? Sure, name, who stands, name an address for the record, if you can. I say that to people, and, 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 well, I say, I say that, and it's not always, it's not always the case, right? So I apologize, but so we can hear you.
Pete Cattymanic, one forty Turner Road. I would reiterate everything that Ted just said. This has been litigated and found to be, you know, a fourth or fifth tried attempt at biting the apple at that point a number of years ago. This would be the fifth or sixth time that Steve is going to do this based on his most favorable interpretation of this amendment to the bylaw. There's been no structure on that property for forty-some odd years. It's not a blighted property. It does not fall under any of the previously mentioned reasons to grant variance, and I think that the board should treat it such. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone? Name, name an address for the record.
Gregory Morse, one sixty-seven Tech Factory, Conrady. In, in reading this new bylaw that, you know, it was adopted at the town meeting, you know, there certainly is nothing that prevents an application coming forward with any application site, my boss, Steve, reviewing it.
Sure.
In looking at this as, you know, citizen of the town, if I had a neighbor that had some sort of, whether it be a flood or a fire at their property, their property would be uninhabitable, I would hope that they would do the right thing, take the house down. Especially if there's a record of a house being there and that they would ultimately someday have the ability to put the house back. To leave a structure that's dilapidated, in poor condition, it's going to hurt the entire neighborhood, it's going to hurt my property values next door. I hope the board will look at a case, you know, and realize when an applicant does do the right thing and actually prevents light. This new bylaw we've heard is to prevent light. It almost encourages it because it's requiring these applicants to leave buildings up that might not be in the best shape and probably shouldn't be left up. And that seems to be what we're hearing on the cases that were brought up, that there were damage from fires, damage from floods. You know, they probably shouldn't have taken down much before, they certainly were. You know, this case here, it sounds like there was a house there recently. There's a water tie-in, a sewer tie-in, that, yeah, this hasn't been used, but they certainly paid for it. They certainly, this, this is not a vacant, new construction lot. And then lastly, kind of be more of a, more of a question to the board. In reviewing an application like this and making a finding, and you're trying to look and determine if this is going to be detrimental, I guess, to the, to the neighborhood, zoning district, etc. How would you go forward in looking, seeing if a building, a house that sounds like it fully complies with all setbacks would be detrimental if there's houses of similar size on similar lots that most of which probably don't comply in the neighborhood? How would you make that determination, or how do you make a finding in this case?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, and this is just an opinion. I think that the answer is that it really is a case-by-case analysis, right? And, and we take all the factors into consideration as we always do with all our, all our decisions, right? And, and in our discretion. So, but it's a fair question. Anybody else that has not spoke, so thank you. Has anybody else here that hasn't spoken? Anybody online that would like to speak?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, look at Jeff, name an address for the record.
Thank you, Jeff Delisi, I'm here individually, three eighteen Country Way. Just a couple of brief comments to the board. I think that this is a finding and not a special permit. I think it's a finding in the context of pre-existing non-conforming structures and changing them because your bylaw requires that the board acts as a permit granting authority to make a finding in that context as opposed to a special permit granting authority. And I think it would be a special permit if the board would be acting in a special permit granting authority, and that type of circumstance would be if there's a special permit use required under the zoning chart or if there is a special permit use under some other provision of the zoning bylaw, which, which I think there is. As far as the issue of whether the board can wa, waive a requirement, even if it does, didn't have a building on it in twenty twenty-two when the amendment, not adoption, was passed, I think the board definitely could waive. I think that the board has already established that determination when it granted a waiver for the property that was before the board in September. And so I think that the focus of Steve's application ought to be whether there's a good explanation as to why, whether there's a plausible explanation as to why the owner of the property back between nineteen seventy-eight and nineteen eighty did not apply within that required two-year timeframe. It was two years at the time. I think Steve has explained that to the ZBA. And, and I think that the board ought to listen carefully to that explanation. As far as beyond the initial two-year timeframe, starting in nineteen eighty and the various permit requests or waivers that Steve and other, and another applicant requested on that property, I do think that there, there, there was not a mechanism in the zoning bylaw for anybody to come forward from nineteen eighty until twenty twenty-two. And if the board has the authority to grant a waiver starting in twenty twenty-two, this is the first opportunity for somebody that owns that property to come forward and request that the board waive. And I think that it's in the board's fair discretion to do that. One thing I disagree with Steve with is I could understand that he might be interested in, in kind of joining the application, which I was in front of the board, which is still pending in December, to his application now. I don't think that factually the reasons for not acting within the initial required timeframe are the same. And I do think that there are some other factual differences, though I do agree with him that the, with the legal interpretation, and I agree with his conclusion. So those are my comments for what it's worth, thank you.
Yeah, as always.
And, and I'll be, I'll be speaking to the board and addressing the distinction at the appropriate time when my hearing is in front of the board. But I, I don't think that the board should be thinking, oh, one or the, or, it has to be both or none at all.
Yeah, as, as I said earlier, to, to, to the previous inquiry, these are all case-by-case, very individual applications, right? And we will consider each one fairly in our discretion. Anybody online?
No hands up.
No hands up. Okay, I give Bob one more bite of the bylaw, anything else? So I will, well, I'd like to go to the board, because they're the only ones that haven't spoken yet. I can start it. So a couple of things that I think are clear. Well, I don't know if they're, the questions before us is whether we think that we have the power to waive the four-year period for property that has been abandoned or not used. Property has not been used in this case. Right, so it's not, it's fully not used. It's been not used for more than four years. It has not been used since prior to twenty twenty-two. It has not been used since it was torn down in, I think it was back. So that's one question that we have, whether we have the ability to do that. And whether, and whether the second possibility, and one, modification of structures that reduces or land, of land resources, although it existed back in the day, discover that I probably don't smell the problem. So, again, I don't know that anything was there, so I don't know that it, that that part happened.
Is there, is there any dispute on that one, is there anything?
There is nothing, I have, there's nothing there. And it's been, you know, a very neatly manicured empty lot for an extended period. Well, well, yeah, well, taken care of, right? It's not a blight, but it is an empty lot. So, so there's that. I know a couple of things I would like to note, right? The reason that this is an issue is that the lot is not conforming. It's an archery zoning, it's not, it's not conforming as to lot area, it's a tiny lot, lot width and lot frontage, and the proposed setbacks would be non-conforming with respect to the front setback. That's completely conformal. What's the front setback in an arch, see average?
So it's completely conformal.
Okay.
There are, there are no non-conformities other than the side of the.
Okay, so, so that's the basis. I just told you what I have in front of me, maybe I'm upset, I apologize, right? I have twenty-six feet, I, I don't have a notation.
The MCA.
The MCA, okay, okay. So it would be twenty-six feet, which, put in New York, would meet the average. I don't think you would admit that, okay? So I'm sure that's true. Okay, so that's, so that's what we have, right? Slightly increase in size with respect to the house that was there in nineteen seventy-eight. So those are sort of those facts. The other fact that we have is that as of prior to April eleventh, twenty twenty-two, this issue had been litigated, I think Mr. Bjorkland was correct in saying that prior to that point in time, there was no mechanism for any house that was over two years old, properly under eight ten point one, to come forward, right, and ask for a, a, a waiver of the time, right? It was a hard, hard stop, right, prior to this point, right? And that's why this zoning bylaw changed.
They couldn't ask for it, like you didn't have the ability to grant.
Yes, any, anybody can ask anything, right? But there was no provision that provided for it. As of, so under the prior provision and as of, get down this, February third, twenty sixteen, the issue had been, quote unquote, settled by the land court. And the property was what it is, which is an empty lot that would have the other uses that an empty lot could have, but by itself would not be separately eligible as of that date. Mr. Bjorkland is here because he's saying that, one, now we have the ability to grant a waiver. He's not, he's not stating that as a right, he can build on this property. He's asking that under the provision of eight ten point one, it says we can grant a waiver of the time period that we should grant him a waiver. Again, just laying it out there for. And I would note that as of twenty sixteen, it was what it was, right? And that us failing to grant the waiver at this point would not change the current state of the property. That doesn't mean we do or we don't, I'm just saying that that's factual. It's not the taking, right, because we don't grant this, because, right, there was no property right other than the property right that exists, existed, that has changed, that would change. That is my sort of observations and comments. Sort of the summary and state of this, Mr. Bjorkland did a wonderful job summarizing the history. Bob did a great job summarizing what, the changes in the bylaw, I'm kind of being kind of behind it. So I think we're good on that. I'm going to turn it to the board, to the other members of the board. Questions? Comments, thoughts? Or, or motion, whatever you want.
I don't have nineteen thirty-six Citewood zoning bylaw. I have, car, says the objectives of the zoning bylaw are to conserve health, secure safety from fire, flood, panic, and other dangers, provide adequate light and air, prevent overcrowding of land, avoid undue concentration of population, conserve natural resources, prevent blight and pollution of the environment, and to encourage the most appropriate use of land. I think when the zoning bylaws were adopted, let me rephrase, let me start again. When these neighborhoods were created, a lot of these neighborhoods in Citewood, almost every map that you look at has a hundred tiny little lots on it. And when the zoning bylaw was created, it was to basically straighten that out and say these houses, the lots are too small, we're, we're backing too much in together. So it has the effect of eliminating non-conformities over the years. I think in general, this four-year time period and depredations, abandonment, unused, and whatnot, gives the town the opportunity to eliminate a non-conformity. After four years, if a piece of property has not been used, if, again, there's no piece of, there's no, can you get it right? There is no structure existing in whole or in substantial part on the property. And I understand what you're saying about we're actually encouraging light. No, we're not, after four years, tear it down, get rid of it. We're not telling you to leave it there forever. I think in, you know, this has been an empty lot for, I'm not going to do it in forty years. It continues to be an empty lot, I think, anything, putting anything on it, on a non-conforming lot is just, I think right now you're starting over. Four years has passed. I wouldn't go so far as to say that although it's not worded in here, I think it should, you know, that four years should maybe extend to the original owner that suffered the loss, you know, I don't. I don't know if that can be, you know, made real or not. We aren't bound by previous decisions. All of the other examples that you brought up, you can give me an address, you can give me a hundred addresses. What was the size of the lot, what was the condition of the house, what, you know, I don't have any other details. So all of that, while I appreciate your knowledge of the history. So, all of that, while I appreciate your knowledge of the history and everything and all your research, it's not doing anything for me. We're talking about one forty-one Turner Road, it's an empty lot, it's been an empty lot for forty years. It was an empty lot when you purchased it. And you purchased it knowing that the bylaw stated at the time two years, right? Or was, it was the page made?
Yeah, two years.
So, two years.
A month, two years.
And you still purchased the lot at your own risk, that the zoning board may or may not grant a waiver to the time for it. We have the discretion to waive it or not. In the case of Holly Road, the house existed in whole. It was
In the current situation, with the potential blight, right? It was, it was a house that existed in, in most part, right? And we were trying to sold to an owner.
Again, I don't agree with everything that's in it, I would like, you know, but I think in this situation, I think we are holding to the purpose of the zoning bylaw and eliminating non-conformities. I still say, you know, if it were five years, six years, eight years since the house was lost, it would be a different story, it's been forty years. I don't know if that is where I should end it, but that's how I'm gonna end it. I don't agree that, I don't believe that this is worthy of extension or qualifies for that extension.
Yeah, I, I think there is no question that the effective date of the bylaw is April eleventh, two thousand twenty-two in the ten point one. I don't think there's any relation back to nineteen thirty-six. I think that was the intention, nor do I think that's what the statute or bylaw reads. And I agree with Chris, I think the purpose of the zoning bylaw is to lay things out as they now want them done and to eliminate non-conformities. Most of these lots that come before us that are pre-existing non-conforming essentially have grandfather status. That they can do certain things because grandfather didn't continue to use. But at some point, once the use stops, they lose their grandfather status. And now they're subject to current zoning. And I think that's unfortunately what's happened to this law is that it lost its grandfather status. Can't tell you when that happened, but it was a while ago. And now it's subject to current zoning. And due to all the non-conformities, essentially, I think the relief you're seeking that we're really able to give, I think if just due to the fact that it's a vacant lot, I don't think it's enough to give us a reason to give the relief that you're seeking at this point, because the only vacant lot at that point will qualify. I don't think that was the intent of this by, this bylaw nor what we've charged to do in interpreting new bylaws. So, I think, I think it's lost its grandfather status and is now subject to current zoning due to the lost size and frontage enforced as a result of this non-conforming lot. And I don't believe that what you propose to be built can be built. I don't know if anything really can be built, but all who have before us is what you're proposing. I think what you propose can, it goes to lose its grandfather status.
Yeah, I think I, I think I agree with, I think I agree with that point. The two things that sort of have been paused, and maybe we can flush this out a little bit. There's some takings issue, seems to be somewhat in conflict here in that, on one hand, we have zoning bylaws that we are charged with interpreting and enforcing and eliminating non-conformities. But at the same, at the same time, we have this point about if you, if we enforce bylaws that take away a person's ability to, to use their property in a way that they see fit.
Well, you've got, it's like, well, that's why I think, it's not in the way that they see fit, right? It's, it's diminishing the commercial value of a thing as it exists at a particular time. So, it's, if a thing has no value or has a diminished value, right? And some, there's a change of law, right? And that law changes the economic value to the negative, right? It may, that's why we bring father in, this is new properties, right? I have a house, it's on a non-conforming lot, bylaw changes, right? It's a, you know, it's on a lot, the lot now not conforming. I magically, I'm not, nobody's gonna take me out of my house, right? Who goes to the house? That's the reason, yeah, so, so I think it's eminent and consistent, I don't think that that's a situation here by any means, right? This is a property that has been, you know, its status for forty years, right? Because of the actions of the people that are, right? And that's, right?
And then, I guess, this, you raised this issue about the, I think, Mr. Locke. There was some discussion with the town in the early eighties about rebuilding. There may not be documentation associated with that, or it seems like there's there was some discussion about whether rebuilding even just the timeline may or may not have been read to or, you know. That, this is, I presume this is the, the substance of the court case that is pursued over the last many years, is that right?
Yeah, so the court, the court case has basically, right, because as of under the previous bylaws, it's a two-year provision, right? With the nine stands, right, there's, the land court has determined that it is as it is, right? So, the question here is, under the amendments to the bylaw, which is not just a four-year period, but also are related to waived sure to four-year period, whether, and again, I think you're on an absolute right to be here. There was a change in the bylaw, you know, titular interpretation, but it's, it's believable to him. And he wants to bring it before the board, super fair. Right, so I wanna make that clear to anybody that might be listening, right? Your presence here is not by any means objectionable, right?
Never has been.
Yeah, right, it never has been, never should be, right? So, so thank you for coming. But that being said, I, I think that's, that's the issue. So, that's it. Do you want?
I have a comment about that nineteen eighty-six, I mean, I just, real quick, I name it, I'm sorry, Ted McCafferty, one thirty-eight Turner Road. Stephen quoted me as saying at one point at a meeting in nineteen eighty-six, but I'm pretty sure I was not at a meeting in nineteen eighty-six. That call was made back in nineteen ninety-two. I don't recall any hearing before the board that included Mr. Locke.
Okay, thank you. Okay, you want to make it, or you make it?
I can wrap something up if I can.
Oh, absolutely, I'm sorry, absolutely, you guys won, sure.
I, I'm gonna give it my last shot, how's that?
You got it, absolutely.
Right, I, I agree, you're losing non-conforming status after a certain period of time. So, every individual that comes in here for that waiver has already lost their right. Every house that comes in, Holly Road lost its right, she voted in favor of it, but they lost their rights. They were no longer non-conforming, it was illegal at that point. But somehow they got the status back as non-conforming. That's what you did, that's when you voted that in, you voted them legal again. But you have the right to vote this in legal again, that's the purpose of that waiver. I would hope you would agree with that. Doesn't matter if it's vacant or if it's abandoned and not used and there's a burned-out structure. They lost that right. The purpose of this is to get that right back again, that's why that's put in there, okay? It doesn't say, you know, it can or can't if it's vacant or anything like that. It just says you can go in and you can request that waiver. I go back and I just respond to Bob real quickly when he talks about the intent, when we get back to the planning board meeting. It's not the intent to shut the door on any property. It is not as though the language precluded one forty-one Turner Road. Okay, so I took that at Space Valley. So, when we talked about whether I was in favor or not of the bylaw, I ended up, I was in favor of the bylaw because I asked a specific question about one specific property. I was given the answer. So, maybe I was duped at that point in time, I guess, so that I wouldn't go against the bylaw. Been done before, probably shame on me, I fell for it again, right? If that's the case. I don't think that Bob would do that, I like Bob, we get along great, this is only one project. We have a hundred projects going on, I'll never hold anything against him, I think he's a great guy. But I honestly believe that he did this so that people would not lose the economic values, been mentioned many, many times in the hearings. George, as far as I can see, in December, I don't think anything has changed from the December meeting until now. In December, you clearly said you have the ability to waive the timeframe. That was on a vacant lot in, on Central Avenue. You came to the conclusion that you could actually do that. Now, you're coming to the conclusion that you can't do that.
Right?
You just said you can't do it if the structure wasn't there on April eleventh of two thousand twenty-two. I'll, I'll play the meeting back again, that's what she said. We're not, we're not making any decision on Humor Lot tonight anyway. I'm not, I'm not asking you to make a decision. It's a completely different case, it has nothing to do with one forty-one Turner Road.
So, there is a question of whether we have the ability or the inability to grant the waiver.
Correct.
Right, so that's, that's a question, your position is we have the ability to grant the waiver, right? Of, of property that was not in existence of April eleven, twenty-two.
Correct.
And, and, and again, within the four, separate and separate four-year period. Okay, maybe we do, maybe we don't, but we do have discretion to do that. And I have the opinion that this property, I, I wouldn't, I mean, I would not, I would not grant it. Other people will have other opinions. But I will make a motion that we deny the application. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you, Steve, great presentation.
Okay, we'll see where it goes.
We'll see where it goes, we've been down, the town has been down this road before.
Okay.
So, so we'll see where it goes. Thanks, Steve. All right.
Thank you for your time.
No, that's what we're here for, right?
Couldn't make a better argument than that, that's, that's all I got.
I think you did a great job.
And we'll, we'll see what happens, we'll see what happens in the future.
We had final, final, yeah, we had the consensus of minutes, the date of being
And, um, two thousand twenty-three.
So, September and October. So, I moved, I read them, they look good. Saying, so I, I move that we accept the September, twenty twenty-three, and yeah, twenty twenty-three minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
So, done?
Great.
Any other business? None, period, none, I move that we adjourn, do we have a second?
I can tell.
All in favor?